Helen, you gotta let me on the meeting.
What do you mean?
Can't get on the meeting, you gotta let me into the room. Says the host says that has to let you on.
I don't see your name, Rich.
It's okay, so, might show micro valve, but, sure.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting for Northfield Center Township. The public was notified of this public and WebEx meeting by Facebook, Twitter, Community Focus, and an email, Sunshine Law noticed the meeting notification list, information placed on the township website, and electronic sign. Northfield Center Township Board of Trustees, we opened the town hall June 2nd, 2021, intends to file the Center for Disease Control guidelines for the town hall. The access to the meeting was on their website. Chair calls the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Roll call, please.
Paul Buscher.
He's not here.
That's.
No, he's gonna be absent.
Russ Mizol.
Here.
Richard Bell.
Here. Department head reports, we'll start it up. What's that? Oh yeah, that's right, listen, you're right, good talk. Send the pledges allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start out with department head reports. We'll start with the sheriff's office, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone, Captain Joseph here. Sheriff's Office logged 500 CAD entries for calls for service and self-initiated activity in the township in the month of May. We realized there's been some citizen complaints about noise and mini bikes and go-karts, specifically in the Fairhaven Crestwood area, Marwick, Pickwick, and Kenwick, as well as the Beacon Hill Park area. We have stepped up patrols in those areas. We had the radar trailer out on Marwick from May 18th to May 25th, and then on Honeydale from May 25th to June 3rd. Sergeant Walsh, our community policing sergeant, is currently, I believe as we speak, out hanging notices to begin a neighborhood watch in the Beacon Hill Park area. That would include residences on Beacon Hill, Sky Lane, Pleasant View, Honeydale, Brandywine from West Highland to the Beacon Hill, and then West Highland Road from Brandywine to Old Eight. The plan is to have the first meeting on Wednesday, June 9th, at the town hall at 7:00 PM. And... That's it. Any questions?
Yeah, we had some, we had issue with the VFW Hall. We had people pulling out there after their shows. We sent them a letter to the VFW Hall, but I guess a couple neighbors, we've taken some complaints about it, where they were going out there and they were speeding and racing down the street.
Okay. No, that's the first I've heard, that, is that late at night specific, or?
Um, no, that, Captain Joseph, Russ Mizol, so, what I was told was that it's typically during like a car show or some sort of function that the VFW would hold. And so, again, we sent them a letter just letting them know to let their guests know, you know, to be friendly neighbors, to be cordial when you're leaving the parking lot, not to race down Old Eight. But again, I guess it happened again this past weekend when there was a car show on Saturday, so.
Okay. I'll let the deputies know to be on the lookout for events there and be in the area when they let out.
Yeah, thank you, I was gonna ask if you are aware of when they do have events, I don't know if that's made aware to you guys, or if you guys keep.
It is not to me, no.
Okay.
Do you guys have that information?
No, we don't, we don't get it.
We don't get it directly from the VFW, we're just made aware of it through other, I guess, third parties or whatever, so.
Okay.
Just wanna work together and make sure that the residents in that area are, you know.
Absolutely, certainly.
Yeah, and the other, the other comment we had was that issue over on Crestwood.
Yes.
Where you talked about with the vehicles, we posted it. Our zoning inspector posted it because we were going through the process of it, to file through to remove the vehicles. And, of course, the resident came up and told Judy and Don that one of your officers told him that he was okay, and I know you and I talked about it, and you told me that, or maybe I talked to the officer, that, no, he never said that issue. So that's still an ongoing issue. You and I talked to the people in the neighborhood on that, and it's still an ongoing issue.
Okay. Are the vehicles in, the vehicles that you tagged, were they in the front or the rear of the, of the residence?
Combination of, we didn't tag the vehicles themselves, we tagged the house. We put a notice for, on the house itself. But this has been a going thing for 20 years, 15, 20 years.
Okay.
We're just, we need to bring this thing to a conclusion, and I know our zoning inspector's out of town this week, but we need to bring this thing to a conclusion.
Yeah. I mean, it is a zoning issue, but we would be 100% on board with, you know, getting with your zoning officials when they go out to speak to him, and also when the whole process has gone through, and, you know, we'd be more than happy to go out there with them when, you know, if towing the vehicles is necessary, and stand by and assist with that.
Okay, when, when he gets back in town, we'll have Helen or Judy talk to our zoning inspector, and make sure that, yeah, I understand, make sure that we're filing through and we get, communicate that with you.
Okay.
Excellent, I appreciate all the help, anybody else have anything for?
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire chief?
Good evening, everyone. The calls for May of this year, there in Northfield Center specifically, there were 49 EMS runs, 16 fire runs. The biggest event for the month in Northfield Center was the garbage truck fire on May 20th, closed the road for about four hours. Was an issue for us because it's a compressed natural gas powered vehicle that was venting and burning. The vehicle was in fact a total loss, closed that west end of West Twinsburg Road, like I said, for four hours. Deputies were great help, had the road closed, the county came out, put road closed signs up and stuff like that, so, and the engineer was out, and also they were looking at checking to make sure the road wasn't damaged, if they had to do any road repair there. We also had an MVA, I believe at five points, that took down a pole and some wires. No one was injured, but it did cause a little traffic jam, that was the Sunday of Memorial Weekend. An interesting thing that's been happening is we keep getting calls for the county sewer pumping station located there in a crossings right on 82. Every time their generator fires, they run it once a week for a test. It spews smoke out of the back of the building, and it seems like there's always somebody in the area that calls. We've contacted the county and asked them if they can look at the generator and make sure it's running properly, so we don't get those, you know, per se, they're not nuisance calls, people are doing what they believe is right, they think the building's on fire, but it's the generator not running properly, we believe, and they're supposed to be looking at that. Another interesting thing I found looking at the numbers today was, we had seven injury accidents in the township in the month of May. That seems like a lot, so, I would just caution people, be careful when you drive, the weather's nice, and be careful on the roadways. Does anybody have any questions?
I know we had that accident on Twinsburg Road with the guy went through the fence again.
Right.
We seem to have an ongoing thing there now. The intent from Summit County is to put a traffic light there this month.
Right.
Okay, and, so hopefully that'll alleviate some of that problem. Then, of course, as you know, that Highland Road will be closed this month.
Yes, thank you for reminding me.
And then I think Twinsburg Road, if I'm not mistaken, they're talking about paving Twinsburg Road, too.
At the same time?
We don't know for sure, we're looking at, we gotta find out all the details on it.
Okay.
So we'll let you know, we'll keep you informed, but it's, you know, it's gonna create such a mess because everybody's gotta either go down to 82 or go into Boston Heights, or if they get across, go up Twinsburg Road to Valley View Road, so, as I talked to a bunch of people, that's probably the way that they're gonna go, but.
Yeah, it's gonna be a traffic problem, sure, and the bridge is out for three months or something like that, correct, 90 days?
No, it looks like about 120.
Oh, okay.
So, depends, yeah, because the bridge, if the superstructure below the deck is good, then there'll be 90 days, if it's not good, then it'll be 120 for sure.
Okay.
Okay, just so you know.
Yep, thank you.
No problem. All right, service department?
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, how's everybody doing? I got our power slide here up for the month of May. I'm gonna try and fly through this. Utilities, we had due to storms and vehicles hitting lines, we've had lines that had to call in for Shady Lane, Morningside, and Beacon Hill Park, which all have been corrected. There were two damaged hydrants that came into play, they were repaired by the water department, one near CVS on Old Eight, and the other one down by Brandywine Falls on Brandywine Road. In regards to service department equipment, we had a recall repair on 529, first, that was for the airbags, and then we serviced that truck, and then 538, which is our excavator, we had a hydraulic line blowout while we're in use, we minimized the leak, and we had to repair it on site, and we had four hydraulic lines that were in bad shape. As far as emergency fire equipment, the only issue we have is the secondary squad, it's got a siren control box that's apparently unrepairable, and we're looking into a new one, which I believe is on order, or will be. Buildings and grounds maintenance, service department, we had an issue with the tarp on the salt shed was coming loose, they didn't use any kind of washers on the bolts that were holding it in place, so, we modified and replaced every large washers, that should take care of it for its lifespan. We also, in the service yard, removed five truckloads of piled up concrete and did some yard tidying up. American Security went to the town hall and safety building and replaced a bunch of detectors. Oops, sorry about that, and I did get with ODOT and addressed the issues and concerns for the fire department with the emergency zone on Route 82 for getting that painted, and there was also a no blocking exit sign that needs to be posted there, too, that they're aware of. So it's on their agenda. Miscellaneous, we put the flags up around the town. We did have an emergency call on the 29th out of the blue with no wind, no storm, but it was windy and raining earlier in the night, with a large limb on Butternut Road, I had to go out and cut and remove that from the road. Road maintenance, we had an issue at 7720 with a contractor damaging a road edge with their excavator, a letter was sent to address that issue, and that's something we're gonna put on the agenda for repair. At 265 Sky Lane, the sunken water repair patch from the water department was finally paved, so no longer an issue. We've completed all cold patching repairs, so from here forth, it'll be hot patching. We're waiting on Summit County Engineers Office to get the cost estimates for the road surfacing plans for the Wicks area, Rolling Brook Development, and Shelf Drive. Stormwater, regarding catch basins due to storms, we've had to clean off debris on catch basin tops on Marwick and Bayberry Roads. Once again, Summit County Engineers Office was finishing off bid specs, so we can get the contractor bids out for the 18 catch basins we submitted for repair. We did ditching at 12 residents, 11 of them being in the Oakmonts, and then 103 Berry Lane. We did two sinkhole repairs, one at 7500 Fantail, and at Charter Drive and Boy Court Intersections. We finally got our culvert pipes, 411 and 57 limestone supplies delivered, so we'll be able to work on drive pipe replacements for the summer. Regarding parks and grounds, we secured all the new lids that we bought for the stone trashcans, so they're secured by chain, so we won't have the wind blowing them away as happened earlier in April. Sharpscapes got everything mulched, the annuals were planted, they're keeping up with the mowing, and they did fertilize the required lawn areas, and I think they're doing a great job. Beacon Hill Park, as everyone's seen, they, they got the courts sealed and striped. We planted two river birch trees and edged, and then Sharpscapes came in, and they trimmed the burning bushes, and they mulched the shrub beds and the tree beds. The park, if everyone has not been around there, you'll see there's been a lot of activity, everyone's using it, we're getting lots of positive feedback on the park from the residents via phone call, or just when we're there checking on it, they're very ecstatic about the use of the park. On the other note, from our popping in there for inspections, or just doing things we gotta do, we're finding trash around the playground, it's not making its way to the trashcans, we're finding food particles and food waste underneath the picnic tables, and we're finding the trashcans are filling up quickly. Other observed things, we're noticing rocks in the tennis court, which means kids are throwing them over the fence into there. We have video of older teenagers climbing on playground equipment, we're concerned about them getting hurt. We're also noting evidence of kids climbing over the four-foot high fence on the short side of the tennis court, and that evidence is with the tops of the fence being bent down or bent over. I'm recommending we do Monday and Friday inspections of the parks, and we pursue a proactive approach to making parents aware of concerned behaviors of identified children via police or letters from identified footage from video. We're planning on installing the four-foot height.
Frank, let me interrupt.
Yes.
The last footage we have with the kids bending the equipment over and climbing on top was sent over to the sheriff's office.
Okay.
With the addresses of the kids that were doing it to the best of our ability. I don't know if Captain Joseph, you still on, or what? He may, he may have taken off, but we'll.
No, I'm still here.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I did get the, I did get the information on the juveniles, but I did not receive any video.
Well, it went with it, I thought, but I will double check it, we'll get you the video over for it.
Okay.
All right, we'll make sure that administrator gets it over to you, but, and we should come up with a plan to address these with the parents, whether the trustees and the sheriff's office visit them, or something to that nature. Because Frank's right, they were bending this equipment over, the stuff that's designed for two and three-year-olds and four-year-olds, they had 15-year-olds on there bending it in half, so... We, we need to address this issue, I know it's not a high priority to yours, but we still need to make sure that we don't get any further into it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you again for the help, go ahead, Frank.
And finally, the four-foot fence that we have, we're gonna install that on the back of the property here sometime this month, and if I understand, I don't have a date here, but we should be seeing the contractors there to install the net bases and seal off and stripe the tennis court.
Yeah.
And then my report.
Parks, Parks and Recreation Committee will have a, you know, statement on that. Okay. Frank, what is, going back to Beacon Hill's driveway with the contractor destroyed, you know, ruined the end of the driveway or so forth, was there a temporary?
Go ahead.
Was there a temporary patch put in there?
Oh, what we did is we went over there, it is, it's probably a two-foot chunk of the road edge, maybe a foot in, and basically what we did is we pulled that chunk out that was more in the, on the edge of the road versus in the road, and then we temporarily cold patched, but what we'll do here, when we get some other things together, we'll get the hot patch, we'll cut that section out and put some actual solid asphalt in there.
Okay, what have we done to the contractor, to, I know we sent the letter out, but what is our follow-through on that?
That's all I know at this time, until we establish a cost for a repair.
Okay, have we got any response from the contractor? That did it, that did the damage?
I do not know of that, that would be from Helen's side of it.
Mr. Chairman, we did not receive any response, and the letter actually stated that we will be forwarding a bill, an invoice, once we know the exact cost, but we have not received a response.
Was this forward to the prosecutor's office at all?
I will check on that, if it wasn't, I will forward one to Mr. Galonsky.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, anything else, Frank?
No, sir.
Russ, any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, moving on, we're, zoning inspector is out of town, his son got married, so, as far as zoning issues, Judy, you have anything on zoning issues?
No, we have hearings coming up again this Thursday. We have two hearings coming up Thursday, again, for the vet clinic here at the intersection.
Okay.
Regarding setbacks for new building, and also the possible barbecue stand that would be placed at Howard Shafthams Plaza.
The portable barbecue?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, it's not a truck, but it's a.
Issue's indicating tents with some.
Tents, okay.
So those are two double hearings on Thursday, and then the 17th, again, the following Thursday, we have the chickens again, the continuance, the chickens on Beechwood, and also where they added, last, last Thursday, the 3rd, one of the applicants did not show up for his hearing, the Pocky International Kitchen, so they just continued that as a courtesy to him on the 17th, we did call him, I haven't heard anything, so I don't know if he is planning on continuing with that, because word on social media is that he bought the loose moves, or he's renting the loose moves, so maybe he didn't need it anymore, but he didn't give us any indication.
Okay. And as far as the other developments and stuff like that, we have nothing going on right now, because they're working with Summit County at this time.
Yeah, there's nothing on Panda Express has, Panda Express has submitted some applications.
Right.
But nothing's going forward yet either on that, it's, those are bigger projects.
Yeah, we, Don forwarded me the information on, I don't know if it forwarded to you or not, the information, the procedure that Macedonia went with, you know, new procedure, so, but just, I don't know if there's a whole lot of difference in what we used to do.
I hear Judy, you have very gentle voices, and the microphone is the major microphone is what we're.
Okay. I'll put it, move it as close as I can get. Mona here, her being. All right, so we're moving on, we, we have that. I don't think there's anything else in zoning except for small issues right now that are going on.
Lots of regular permits, you know, just regular residential permits.
Okay, we have the county engineer? Is Eugene on?
He's not listed as a participant.
Okay. All right, then the next one is the township administrator?
All right. First of all, the July meeting, we're going to have to move, it's July 5, a Monday, the first Monday, but that is a legal holiday for July 4th, which falls on a Sunday, so do you wish to hold this or move it till Tuesday, July 6?
Our policy is we move it, if it's up of a holiday, we move it to the, the day after the Tuesday.
The following day, so, okay, so your next regular scheduled meeting will be Ju- July 6 on a Tuesday at 7:00.
Correct.
Okay. One note, on our website, we had something about the county engineer sent a notice about subdivision basin and detention basin inspections, I've updated the website, it's only for the Sky Haven subdivision this year, that will, they will be inspecting the detention basins. I filed the grants with NOPEC for an A air conditioner for the town hall, and I filed with community development block grant, a new roof, for a new roof and gutters for the town hall, both which were approved by the Board of Trustees in earlier meetings. Wednesday, I'll be filing the Nature Works reimbursement for $114,035 to be reimbursed for Beacon Hills Park, and we should submit our final numbers for the UAN to the state auditor by June 10. And that's all I have for now, oh, other than we are taking bookings for the town hall now that we're open again, and pavilion reservations as well.
Okay.
And Judy, Judy and I are maintaining a calendar, and the book is in Judy's office out front.
Now, we have to post that at the, at the pavilion every time it changes. So we're gonna have to figure that procedure out.
I think that's something that I think the park committee should come up with, I had asked Frank, well, probably it was Rick, I had asked the service department about putting a frame up there on the pavilion, just like an eight-and-a-half-by-10 frame, and then with a glass, and we would insert who the pavilion's reserved for.
It's already there, Helen.
It is there? I did not know that.
And you put it up a while ago, it's the poster board where we'll put the rules for the park, and at the same time, that'll have the pavilion rental, it's right in front of the pavilion.
Okay, so then that'll show who has the pavilion for that day. All right, thanks. All right. Thank you.
Update that whether the road, the service department comes up, if there's a change when they come up and go by here and they can post it up in the park or we work out some other details, but we'll have to figure that out.
Right. Or I, I can run down or Judy and change it.
Okay.
All right. And that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Any questions?
No questions.
No, I think that's it. I, I know you got a couple of things working, so we'll just keep working on those right now. Oh, UAN, that's the question. I apologize. UAN, what are we looking forward to get the equipment timewise?
I, I, that was my final part of the report. I should have the numbers. They need the numbers, year to date numbers whenever we send it. And I should have those in to them by the end of this month.
Okay.
June is a halfway mark.
How long does it take to get the equipment after that point?
Usually 90 days. But that's after uh, twenty-four hour, uh, two full days of training for the fiscal officer before they send it.
So we're still looking out till November, October, November times?
Sure. Yes, most definitely. My recommendation is to get them trained. We'll get them trained and get the equipment in and turn it over January one of 2022.
That's what I think too.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question for Helen? Committee reports, communications. Do we have anybody for communications here? See nobody for communication parks and Rex? Okay, microphone. Frank, can you hear Rick? Speaker?
Hello?
He answered, he responded to you. Go say that again. You, I don't know if he can hear you. So.
So moving on. Talked to SciTech this morning and that's the company. To refurbish, repaying like the sports course and where they're ending in. Tell me that within the next seven to 10 days, does America's radio out? She's in, set the posts. That's all today. Boarded it off, they come in and sell it plain. So that portion can totally 100%.
Frank, did you hear that?
I could barely hear. I heard something about five to 10 days coming in. The contrary is a set the post and that's, that's.
Are you on the meeting? No, your phone. Are you on the meeting? And also just turn your volume up, just turn your volume. You talk through your phone and everybody will hear you. No, turn it on. So you can talk right through your, your, your phone and everybody will hear you.
Yes, sir.
We have a video of those kids jumping over the fence.
Okay.
Do we have a video of the kids jumping over the fence? Have you checked the video?
I am not aware of any video of that because the problem you have here is unless we have someone that has a timeframe, you gotta watch it all. And seven days worth of videos, a lot of video.
All right. Have you heard all that, Frank?
I did hear that.
Okay. Let's move on.
Talked to Kate Chapman today. Uh, she is the project senior project manager for Zaker Street Water Charity. Uh, in native guts, the contractors lining up uh, for our review. I'm not quite sure what this is. Probably to get a scope of what we want done. Uh, yeah, that should happen within a couple of weeks. So that's, that's a great point. Just for the record, Commissioner Ravel and I met with Chad Rook, transportation. I think the first week of May, put out a public white presentation of what the issues are. The Grand Wine Creek, Indian Creek, uh, property going, jet properties and stormwater issues in the Kip area. And we gave him a flash drive with that presentation. Back to his office to review with his engineers and see if they could come up with a solution. Media like me was just maybe where the bike goes from Kip in the Indian, Indian. Selling elbow on that.
Just let me interrupt one second there. He did not get the flash drive. We tried to meet, we haven't been able to meet up with him yet because he's been jammed. But what he did tell me is that he walked the property. He walked through the ditch. He could get through the one side, but he couldn't get through the other side. So he's going to go back and do it, but he also, his engineer is going to go through and walk through it too. Okay. And as was as of last week when I talked to him.
So the jumper a little bit. As far as the weekend, he'll start ghosting. I've got a letter put together. Going to connect Dr. Heather Olson of the Department of Iowa. University of Northern Iowa. She's the executive director of playground safety. And you have to, have to, so they can. To see if they can come up to me with the questions. So we can trust it. Lastly, and I, I don't have all the information on this. Richard, Ellen, in fact, maybe you can fill in on this, but I believe that there's some action by some county council or some that is in the council level. It's going to be swim or go back and say. So I don't know what you guys know about it, but I'd like to.
Helen, you brought that information up. Do you have a little bit more information about that? I know what I read.
Uh, yes, yes, sir. I do. Uh, the uh, MS four permits have always been under the county engineer for all 31 entities in Summit County, cities, villages and townships. The Ohio EPA and uh, the US EPA and the Ohio EPA respectively are stating that we must file our own, townships are required. Each entity must file their own. Uh, the county engineer has put together a program where they will officially represent us through the EPA uh, like they have in the past, just the nine townships and offering it to cities and villages who wish to continue to participate. And, but the uh, proviso of that is that they would have to join the stormwater district, the Summit County Stormwater District, which has been organized with county council. And the only one that is a, a member of it currently is one township in Summit County. Uh, so that's the whole issue. I talked with the president of the Township Association of Summit County today to see, uh, I do know some of the townships are reluctant to join the stormwater district. So I'm not sure where we're at right now with this. Uh, it seems to be an impasse. Uh, I'm going to contact David White with the Summit County Engineer tomorrow and to see how many townships have uh, indicated they're willing to join, how many cities and villages? Or do we go out on our own? I'm, I'm not sure, but that's where we're at at this point.
Okay. Go ahead, Rick.
Here we.
Yeah.
Okay. We worked with Summit County Engineers Office. We were very fortunate to get uh, Zaker Street Watershed people aboard with us to do the work. So they're able to look at it. And for us, and I believe that through funds from Northeast Ohio Sewer District.
Yeah, we are. We're getting funds through Northset, right? Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. We got a $4,000 grand, I think it was.
So we did, who of us, uh, would you carry a, a stormwater committee? Look at our options here.
Well, then you, you would have to look at both of them, but we don't know if Northset will file our MS fours or not. If they don't file our MS fours, that's the whole reason to join Summit Counties because this paperwork gets done. And that's their output reports, output reports that they give, that you have to put for every one of your outputs inside the communities. So if, if Northset doesn't do it, then you're kind of stuck there with Summit County if you want to get it done. Did I lose you or? Okay. We, we have to do a report every year on our outputs and the water outputs where they come out and we have, I don't know how many, there is quite a few in, in, in the area. And there's a report that you have to turn into the EPA. What would happen is Summit County, and again, this is to the best of my ability. I don't take this for gospel. Would go and they would do these reports. They would go do the testing and reports and turn that information in. But it looks like they're holding a caveat over. I had to say that we have to join their Summit County Stormwater Program. So we're in a little bit of a catch 22 there. So we have to find a lot of bit more information. It's a little confusing, but unfortunately that's the way the EPA requires it.
So my question.
What we needed Stormwater Committee to do, and this is my opinion, the rest of the make his opinion, Paul can make his, but I would think that what we would need you to do is we get both programs together and we can see what each one will do. Then we can make a decision based on cause factors and the benefits to the community. That's what I'd like the Stormwater Committee to do.
I would think that's a pretty reasonable approach.
Verbatim. No problem. Anything else from Stormwater? Okay. And I don't know if we have anybody from safety services. We kind of skipped over them. Do we have Gene or Joe on the phone or anybody? Okay. All right. What we'll do is we'll open the Florida Public Comments. Comments will be limited to township residents and must relate to the items included on this agenda and be limited to five minutes, less than five minutes. Do we have any uh, questions? Yes. We can't hear you. We can't hear you. We get your microphone? Yeah. You want to identify your, you, yourself and your street, your address? Identify yourself and your address.
Mr. Busher, he is not, he is not here.
Mr. Ravel, I, I, I'm interested to you, Chair, but I think. Appropriate at this time. Both, uh, duty yourself. Subject matter is not on the agenda of the city and they would expect to 100% of township zoning map. Nor is it part of the zoning vision that was passed. Am I correct? So I hope, I will not address this subject in the city because it's not on the agenda. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, it's so hard for everybody to hear. So that's the reason why, because you got people on here on the phone. No. People on the phone can't always say.
Going to the next subject matter. Special meeting, May 17, 2021. Subject matter of the year, shoot this. And that, that occurs on the agenda for the city. For June 7th. In the amendment to the meeting, May 17, 2021. There is the amendment number two, the chair requests resolution 210517B to authorize the purpose of township zoning resolution published with all test amendment December 21st. The 2021 until five. And the amendments were passed. Comments made on the record which constituted by virtue of the disk granted by Helen. Given to me through my request on May 25, 21. The disk is settled. Is dated May 27, 2021, more than 30s, meeting one and two. Date is incorrect. It's not the correct date. However, Helen raised the administrator did in fact correct that placing on the envelope statement that be properly on special meeting this May 17, 2021, meeting recorded to get to the issue without being raised. Judy and her determination that the made comment minutes of special meeting, May 17. And by her gas to that particular resolution that's passed. Her comments relative to my address to the trustees are centralized in what is called virtual meeting remnants and is not contained within the minutes itself. And her discretion apparently. She simply put in there quote, number three amendment of May 17, 2021, special meeting. Mr. Luthery expressed concern guarding resolution number 21 slash 45 S17B. He thought that the previous adoption of the schedule of these not compliant with the law in neither content nor procedure. That was her summation of which not complete as is shown on the record itself by virtue of the tape. I'm simply calling this to the attention trustees because warranted by Helen that she is not sure whether or not express webex has any demanding requirement for safety being in itself for how long. So what is happening is Judy and her discretion chose to summarize the comments made by me on the record and still proven specifically um, and supported by the tape. That's how Bruce made my statements on the record. Problem, gentlemen, is real simple. What happens if this is all that lasts in the minutes? If nothing further, and what happens to the record that some of the quote unquote express? And what happens to the record that some of the quote unquote express? Helen is the administrative, and this year Andy LaGuardia had been a bond and an obligation for the keeping of records under circumstances. Apparently, there's some assistance given to him by what Helen is calling the local records commission meeting, which is signed, signed by, you know, Ms. Zola, at a work session. Maybe it's not such. Yes, I apologize. March 4, 2019. What I'm saying in conclusion is attention the one sentence that picked him, respecting my remarks regarding the record. If somebody chooses to throw this out, the only thing that's left is for May 17, 2021, since special meeting. So in the event that she get lost, or in the event that she concerned about a citizen, the event the zoning sector, in the event this board, or in the event any person who has property in this community needs to review what was stated on the record. It will be, it'll be fine, because apparently it's nothing that precludes this. Take this disk and the content of what I think particularly Judy can handle, the webex, which is what stays on the computer. There's a contract apparently. Simply recognize what I said. And perhaps, uh, Ms. Helen will follow through with what she says she was heard to do today. And check the record relative to what she had in hand, which was a
Mr. Leffery, I'm going to interrupt you a second.
She's saying the recording cut out. While you were talking. That's what she's saying right now. This was now or this is before?
Well, what it means is if you're not hitting this phone here, then on the meeting, because we're in a verbal meeting, she's recording a meeting. Judy's, what are you, you're taking notes on the meeting or? Plus you have a
Can I make two suggestions?
Sure.
Number one, we don't have the recording anymore, with that silver thing. Should we not be using that now?
We should start reusing it.
Start using it, that, the record, the recording thing, the little device we usually have? That we would usually have that, we haven't been using it since we've been doing the webex.
Right.
Where is MB?
What I'm saying, I'm just telling you so you understand, I said, I'm recommending that we use that.
That's because he's sitting here.
And
We're gonna, we're gonna change our procedure to go back to the tape recorder, also on top of the webex.
You want me to jump over again?
No, no. Judy took notes on it.
No, but what I, my other recommendation my recommendation for Mr. Leffery would be to, right now, summarize in a somewhat timely manner what you would like Judy to put in the notes this time, so it's as you like. Because based on what she put last time, you weren't necessarily comfortable with what was there. So if you could tell her what you'd like, then it could be exactly how you'd like, if that makes sense.
Mr. LaGuardia.
Sure.
I appreciate your courtesy and your kindness. And your trust. I'm going to give it to you.
Nobody said you are. We're trying to help you out. Doesn't have to be.
The problem is, if for whatever reason what's on the record is destroyed by virtue of either by contract by what she may have, there's no record. And in future, will not be treated with any credibility. And you as trustees, will not in the future be able to have, be able to trust whatever is just happening, because you're relying on what Judy's comfortable with, is committing once, making one conference, a statement, which in this case, doesn't what she did, she probably problem is, we don't know what's going to happen on these matters, with respect to the future. And the challenges, and that's why the record is of extreme importance in this case, as I'm shooting on the deck. I'm sorry, I didn't get what I wanted, sorry.
Yeah, but Judy also has an answer for, right, correct. You want to put your microphone?
Yeah, the answer, the answer is
We also back up to the cloud too, on this too, so we have, we have multiple backups on that disk and the program, we also back up to the cloud too, so if that disk gets destroyed, we have cloud backup.
You have cloud backup with
Cloud.
Cloud.
Internet cloud and also to our server.
Right, thank you.
Services, the webex?
No.
Okay, what I'm trying to tell you is, the program has no fundamental guarantee of availability in the future, if the contract with webex is canceled, or whatever might go into the webex, how long is webex's records kept?
We, we Right, there it is, right there.
Right, she's definitely missing, she's hoping for the first time.
Okay, just a minute, Mr. Leffery, what happens is it's backed up to the cloud, it's in electronic storage in the cloud, and we have our own internal server that is backed up to our server, so we have three backups on that system to cover ourselves. Are keying out malfunctions? Absolutely. That's why we have the paper documents. It doesn't have to be verbatim, it's got to be a no, concise representation of the minutes, so that's what we're doing, so we have those multiple backups.
Mr. LaGuardia's suggestion is perfectly satisfactory to me. What I'm simply asking is, we have a disk, we have the capacity of the disk being printed out. So all you gotta do is do it, and that's your answer.
We do, we have it all.
You don't have here
Yes, we do.
What you want, but don't say a year from now or two years from now, where there could be a loss, and there could be a, a, an oral piece of record that wants to challenge it.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm telling you this, you have the option, and I think you have the obligation to show the record in a manner which is the best, and that is today, to simply order it to be placed into the record as has already been done, this is done, she did it. So that's all you gotta do is add it to Judy's comment, and you got it protected. LaGuardia's suggestion is covered, I think, as I said.
Add a disk to every
So what you have to do is see the tag, or whatever you, however you want to do it. That's all I have to say.
Okay, don't step on your glasses, be careful. Um, I'm not sure. Do you understand?
Sorry.
Where's moving forward?
We're good.
Yeah. All's good. More public comments?
Yeah, Mr. Leffery, could we ask you to take your time to sit over, we also open up to all the public comments. You had your five minutes, we got to open up to others, we got to give everybody an opportunity real quick. Yeah, you've been on for quite a bit.
Thank you.
What do you have? And you can discuss it, you can ask any question.
I think it's, it's okay.
Well, those are Well, we did talk about it earlier, so yeah, the Highland Road is going to close, we have no jurisdiction over it, Summit County that doesn't. Well, they'll put up No, I didn't, I said they're talking about paving Twinsburg Road too, we don't know what time, time period. Yeah, we hope so too. They're putting a traffic light up at Twinsburg Road. Twinsburg and Old Age, they're putting a traffic light up, traffic light up this month on Twinsburg and Old Age Road. They're going to close Highland Road. And somebody said they were going to pave, pave Twinsburg Road, and I don't know how soon that's going to happen, paving Twinsburg Road. Okay, in the next year. Traffic light's supposed to be this month, and then next year, there'll be widening Old Age Road. And they're supposed to review the plans with us sometime in this month. Okay? It's like, what, 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 what's the reason? You want to answer that one? You're without a committee.
Why we didn't do what?
The fire stations.
No, you're right, you're right, we did buy the property here as a contingency that if we needed to use this access, and I'm pointing towards the Grand Light Road to get out, if we couldn't get out on 82, okay? The reason that we didn't pursue that option, or put the fire station, you're saying connected to the, to the town hall? The reason we didn't pursue that is because in the end, I'll speak for myself. Putting a building, a township building inside my own property, I don't that is It's ours, we own it, but it's inside of our business. Correct, it's still inside our business. That is correct. The other reason that we felt we should move it toward to the property that we already own is because Well, it's three, three million dollars. Well It's actually, if you look at, how I look at it, is I look at it as an investment in the community. It's a very long-term investment, it gives us an operational efficiency where we're going to be all on one piece of property, nothing's happening to the current town hall. But we're going to operate out of one parcel. We're also going to have the fire station in a more set and located area, that'll, that'll help with response times for folks on Spinsir Road, and in his rolling road, things like that. And we just felt that in the end, it was the best path forward, because the building on 82, we know we're going to lose a bunch of frontage when they, when they do widen it. And we have property that we, you know, the way I sort of, I phrase it sometimes is you have a piece of property where we're at with our fire station now, we're looking to move to a new property. We're using basically the equity that we have in the current property that we're going to sell, to help pay down that, that property. So, you know, we have the properties listed, right? There, are they currently listed?
They're in the process of being listed, yes.
I use that for, so that we have two properties currently listed, the property that's to the west of the fire station, and then it's Yeah, and so we really
Yes.
Yeah, and we also have the property east of 82, that was listed for 300,000. So the reality is, we think that, although it's kind of cost 3 million dollars, we really hope maybe, you know, I'm not going to speculate, but I'd say a good third of it, we pay with property that we already own. So now it's not 3 million, it's 2 million.
Well, we
Well, we're working through that, so you're talking about where the, the new fire station will be. We're already working with the county to get a preemptive system hooked up on East Highland and Old Age. We're also working with the county on widening that, that road, and maybe potentially putting in some type of traffic signal on West Highland and Old Age. So we've already sort of worked through that, and we're widening the drive so that the emergency vehicles can make their turns in and out. So we definitely have talked through that with Chief Leffery and Tenet Davis.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, one more thing, then, maybe you'll allow me to walk on the sidewalk over here, they told me before why that water plug
You're talking on the Yeah.
On 82?
Yes.
We, we, Frank Hainer and I and the board. Yeah, yeah, we're working on that right now. As a matter of fact, I hope Frank's still on. But we've already been in contact with the state, and Frank, are you on still?
Frank, are you on?
There I go, I'm here.
Do you have any updates on the, the water that sort of sits on the sidewalks over there? Talked about it.
On the side part.
What it is, is, just to clarify, in a whole, when they went and did some work over there, they did a bunch of catch basin repairs, I don't know, two, three years ago over there when they did some paving. They overlooked two catch basins, those happened to be right in the zone where that sidewalk issue is. So that being said, from talking, I'm trying to remember who it was I talked to, I have notes on it. Uh, the Summit County engineer guy spoke with, stated that this year, they were going to address and fix that problem with those two catch basins, including that sidewalk.
And they fixed the one catch basin already, the one a little bit east of there, or north of there, excuse me.
Uh, that would, that's the county, I'm talking about ODOT, on that Route 82.
Catch up.
Yeah, so the state's looking to do that.
Okay, any other questions? One second, we'll give you an opportunity. Anybody on the phone or on the meeting that has any questions? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Leffery, we'll make it quick though.
Thank you. Ms. Zola, this is this is something you probably don't recall, but this in essence, as a member on this committee essentially sets forth the request from the state of Ohio that, for example, resolutions remain permanent, period. No detention, period, cutoff. This, on the other hand, says, which governs your espresso, or whatever the heck it's called, says, recordings deleted by the end users are soft dealt deletes, even if deleted by an end user, exists in the system and is accessible by the compliance officer. It is permanently removed only after the retention period. The retention period isn't in the contract. She, meaning Helen, says they told her on the phone that it's three years. So if I understand what she's saying, and assuming you're willing to accept that oral statement, rather having it contained in the contract that you've signed, then God bless you. On the other hand, I'm offering you this answer, which in essence is primarily what he has suggested. I will ask you to make a photocopy of Helen's disk given to me, which contains the content and her writing that contains the reference to the date. That's all I want you to do, is accept it, put it in the record, and you've got it. If it come, if the issue comes up, whether it comes up next week or five years from now, you've got it, you don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
That's my suggestion.
No problem, we appreciate it.
I'm offering it to you at this time, I am not giving you a copy of it. I simply want you to have the ability to make copy of what Helen gave to me at the conclusion. I want this back at the end of the evening.
Got it.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Motion and resolutions, consent agenda, all matters under the consent agenda area considered by the board trustees will be routine. It will be enacted by one motion, any trustee may remove an item from the consent agenda by request, no second is required for removal of an item. Items removed for a separate discussion will be considered after the motion to move the consent agenda. Organization items, the chair requests a motion to approve dispense with the reading of all the minutes of trustees. Regular media, May third, twenty twenty-one, trustee special media, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, trustee special media, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Item number two, the chair requests a motion to authorize the fiscal officer to draw current warrants vouchers totaling one hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents to meet current expenditures. Item number three, the chair requests a motion to acknowledge receipt of the bank reconciliation for the month of May twenty twenty-one, received June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Chair requests a motion to approve the, all the items on the consent agenda.
So.
Movement, I'll second. Discussion. See no discussion, roll call please.
Paul Buscher, absent, Russ Mazzola?
Yes.
Rich Ravel?
Yes. Chair requests resolution twenty-one slash oh six dash oh seven A. To adopt a twenty twenty-two alternative tax budget in the amount of seven million five hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
So move.
We got a movement, I'll second. Discussion. See no discussion, roll call?
Paul Buscher, absent, Russ Mazzola?
Yes.
Rich Ravel?
Yes. Chair requests resolution twenty-one slash oh six dash oh seven B. To establish a township public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments. In lieu of ad valorem property taxes from Villa Franca Realty LC DBA Dunkin' Donuts, and approving the school compensation agreement with the Nodonia Hills City School District.
So move.
We have movement, we have second, I'll second it. Discussion. I mean, it's, we've been working on this for a while, and it, it has no impact on the schools at all, so, which is, you know, when they, they were accepted, okay, roll call?
Paul Buscher, absent, Russ Mazzola?
Yes.
Rich Ravel?
Yes. Okay. Chair requests resolution twenty-one slash oh six dash oh seven C. To establish a township public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments in lieu of ad born. Property taxes from Jiffy Lube International Incorporated, in approving a school compensation agreement with the Nodonia Hills City School District, do we have movement?
So move.
Have movement, we have a second, I'll second. Discussion, same as the other one. Roll call please.
Paul Buscher, absent, Russ Mazzola?
Yes.
Rich Ravel?
Yes. Chair requests resolution twenty-one slash oh six dash oh seven D. To a resolution to accept a letter of engagement with Dave Smith Esquire, with Myers Roman Friedperk, and Lewis, at the rate of, was it one seventy-five an hour?
Correct.
Per hour for representation related to legal matters, do we have movement?
So.
We have second, I'll second, we're moving in second, discussion. Our attorney is moving to a, a different location. Um, roll call please.
Paul Buscher, absent, Russ Mazzola?
Yes.
Rich Ravel?
Yes. Chair requests a resolution twenty-one slash oh six dash oh seven E. To auction obsolete R and W equipment on gov.deals, govdeal.com. Excuse me. Do we have a motion?
So.
I'll second, we have movement and second, discussion. See no discussion. Uh, roll call please.
Paul Buscher, absent, Russ Mazzola?
Yes.
Rich Ravel?
Yes. Fiscal officer reports and comments?
Nothing today.
Okay, trustees, reports and comments, you have anything?
Uh, just a quick update from the affinity. We have a sign agreement. Uh, I think that went over today, and we will start to see meetings being set up, probably on a bi-weekly basis. Uh, with their, with their architects, engineers, and so forth, and. Or field center, so those will probably be set up. Uh, starting next week and the following week. As we move into the planning stages.
Okay.
That was it.
I do have one question.
Sure.
What would we, would we be possible, would it be possible for us to maybe look at, uh, moving zoning? Giving their pays on a quarterly basis, instead of doing a hundred and some checks per year would be probably a fourth of that, or a third of that. Since we're start, since I'm starting to write the checks now, it's, it's gonna be twelve checks per month, or twelve every quarter or something, if you guys think that's a better idea.
Well, didn't we do it quarterly before?
No, it's always been monthly.
It's always been monthly?
What do you think, since you're on, you're on one of the boards? Do you think anybody would care?
I, I think you'd have to interview each person.
Yeah. It doesn't matter to me, if, if we end up keeping it the same, I'll do it the same, it's just. Well aware of that. Maybe I could, Judy or myself draft up a letter to all the zoning people and ask their thoughts, if somebody's against it, I don't mind, we can do it all.
Well, she can send, send an email out to everybody and ask them if it'd be okay if we pay them quarterly, or if we pay them monthly, I don't see a problem with that, if they all agree to it, then we pay them quarterly, if not, then.
Means for the most part, it's like one meeting a month, so.
Yeah, it might make sense to them, but.
So you have to send them the check for every meeting?
Now, we, before, I could enter it in the ADP in a second, but now I have to physically, and not that it's, it's another half hour, hour, but it's just kinda silly, I'm sending. Twelve, thirty dollar checks a month, as opposed to. You know, ninety dollar checks every three months, or four months.
That does seem quite silly.
So, I mean, bring it up to them at the board meeting, see what they, because that's, ultimately, they're the ones getting the checks, so I don't wanna, you know, I mean. I'm not, I don't wanna ruffle any feathers, whatever, if they prefer one way, you know, if somebody's standing alone, I have no problem with that. That's it. That's all.
Okay, anything else? I mean, we have a lot going on, other than that, the stuff we talked about, but there's a lot going on, so. Um, the chair requests a motion to enter executive session to discuss employment personnel in the administrative office and the sale of township property, do we have movement?
So.
I'll second. Roll call please.
Paul Buscher, absent, Russ Mazzola?
Yes.
Rich Ravel?
Yes. Tendees and exec session would be the board, uh, the fiscal officer, the administrator, and Judy Flato. Okay, the executive session will start.
Eight nineteen.
What's that?
It's eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen, eight nineteen.
What's that?
Okay, go ahead.
Chair request a motion to leave executive session at 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. Do we have movement?
So moved.
Second, our second discussion, do you know discussion roll call?
Paul Buscher absent, Russ Mazzola.
Yes.
Rich Trevall.
Yes. Chair request a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Our second meeting ends at 9:07 p.m. Roll call please.
Paul Buscher absent, Russ Mazzola.
Yes.
Rich Trevall.
Yes. Thanks, thank you very much for everybody attending. Nice, thank you very much for everybody attending.